...community stakeholders and policymakers. It allows members to voice concerns, share ideas, and stay informed. Before we get started, just a couple of House rules. Audience members, while in the art museum, please refrain from actively campaigning for a candidate. Audience members, please also refrain from applauding until the final candidate has provided closing remarks and the moderator has concluded the event. Sharing the stage with me this afternoon is Jim Love from KLVI. Jim will be the moderator for this forum. Please help me welcome Jim.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this afternoon. And thanks once again to our candidates. We're looking forward to this forum. I've got a couple of housekeeping things that I would like to share with you too, just a couple of items. First of all, timekeeping. In the back, we do have a timekeeper. He's right there, Razor, with the clock and everything. So the time will be maintained. Each candidate will be notified with a visual clue. 10 seconds remaining of their allotted response time, and then we'll hear a little bell and they will close. So that's how we're doing the time. Opening remarks, we're going to start with the opening remarks. Each candidate given two minutes. And the candidates have been encouraged to use their opening remarks as a formal introduction, tell you a little about themselves and their backgrounds. We have questions for the candidates, and candidates are going to be asked questions submitted to the Greater Beaumont Chamber of Commerce by chamber members and various divisions. We'll be calling on the candidates. They will have one minute, one minute to respond to the question posed. The candidates may not directly or indirectly reference their opponent. When responding to the question, all responses should be, we hope, factual and substantive. Direct mentions of opponents or other candidates will be met with a verbal warning. Repeated violations of the rule could result in the loss of a question posed to the offending candidate. Closing remarks, we will have those following the questions. Once again, each candidate will be given two minutes for closing remarks. And again, it's encouraged that the candidates use that time to summarize their platform and share information about their campaign websites, social media pages, and other items pertaining to their campaign. So we're going to start now with the opening remarks. Again, two minutes for the opening remarks, and we will start with Mr. Felschall.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Chamber, for this opportunity. I am Randy Felschall, and I'm running for Beaumont City Mayor. Born in Beaumont, been the pastor of one city church for the last 19 years, served on city council as your city councilman-at-large for the last six years, husband, father to, grandfather to six grandchildren, and they call me Papa Duke. Know that in this campaign, that all these candidates and all the others are going to address the same issues that are good and right, important to all of us: public works and infrastructure, first responders, economic development, and quality of life. Those are the things that we care about. But I just want you to understand what separates the mayor's race from all the others, and that is leadership. The mayor's position is very unique. You have to understand that the city manager and the city council don't work for the mayor. And so the mayor has to have the ability to bring them to a consensus and move them forward with a vision to reach a common goal. This requires the strength of leadership and character that can gain their respect, earn their trust. And that means, as a mayor, there's often times when you're going to have to take a position, and you're going to have to be willing to stand alone. You're going to have to be willing to cast a no vote, even though you know you're going to be in the minority or on the losing side. I said last night at a forum, and I'll say it again here tonight, if you're not willing to stand alone, then nobody will be willing to stand with you. And so in this term, this first term, my two top priorities, and there's several, but my two top priorities will be fiscal responsibility and also restoring strong leadership decorum to the mayor's office. Now, let me close out by just encouraging everyone in this campaign, let's avoid the politics of the past, making political promises we can't keep, giving into political pressure from just a few people in the city. Beaumont, you should expect more of your leaders, beginning with me. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Good evening, everyone, and I do appreciate the opportunity to be before you on this evening. As stated, my name is Christopher Jones. I am 45 years young. I'm a veteran of the United States Army, and I'm a community engager. I've been in Beaumont since I was the age of nine years old. I graduated from Central Senior High School, went to Gremlin State University, North Carolina A&amp;T University, came back home and decided to go to the military. Got a medical discharge, saddening, of course, but I'm still able-bodied, so I came back home and I got to work in our communities. And for, since 2002 until current, that's what I've been doing. I've been a member of 26 or almost 27 local PTAs around the district. I was also district PTA president. I'm currently the president of the South End Charlton Pollard Greater Historic Community Association, and we are doing great things through those organizations, and it has thrust me forward into our communities to build resiliency, to find exploratory scenarios plannings, and everything else. So I believe that it gave me the opportunity to reconnect, not only with some young individuals in our communities and some business owners, but as well as our seniors. And so, as the next leader of the city of Beaumont, as mayor, I hope that I could earn your votes, and I look forward to a wealthy conversation. Thank you.
Mrs. Muton.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank the Chamber and Amy Lavoy, and also Jim. Thank you so very much for hosting this great forum. I am Robin Donata Muton. I am a lifelong resident of Beaumont, Texas. I am a community advocate. I am a strong leader. I've led this city with six years on the Beaumont City Council as a ward four councilwoman. I've also led this city as a very successful mayor for two years. I'm very excited about being back into this race. I'm a mother of two. I've been married to my high school sweetheart for 46 years. My two adult children have given me three wonderful grandchildren, two boys and one girl. I'm also a retiree of AT&amp;T, had a long career of 32 years, customer service rep, but I'm also a union member of 32 years with Communication Workers of America. I've been leading and fighting for the rights of people most of my life. Also, I would like to let you know that I am a very, very proud Beaumenter. I love this city. I'm willing to fight for this city. I've done that. I've led this city. And I also wanted to let you know that my heart is in this city to do the work for the people here. I don't only want to do the work just for the citizens that are up and around, I want to look after the homeless. We have a large homeless population here in Beaumont. We have a home, a large homeless population across the nation. We also have citizens that are disabled, and we have children that are disabled. We need to be able to accommodate all citizens. I want to unify this city.
Time.
Thank you.
Mr. Paredes.
That beep's not too bad, I guess. My name is Jude Paredes, and I was born in Beaumont, graduated from Lamar University, so go Big Red! And there's a forum at Lamar in about a week. And so, after graduating from Lamar, I worked in nursing for a few years, had an issue with my license, and then went into business for myself for the last 30 years, finally reached retirement age, so I'm, I'm, call myself retired, but I'm still doing things, working. And the reason I ran for mayor is the same reason I ran the last three times, when taxes went up, the steam poured out of my ears, and so rather than go off the rails or do anything crazy, kill myself, I said, okay, let me go file to run for mayor. So they, you know, it's not that hard to file, and every time I meet someone, I always say, why don't you run for mayor? Why haven't you, you know, run for mayor? You hear people saying, oh, this is the problem, that's the problem, but then you always say, well, why don't you run for mayor? Why don't you see if you can do it better? You know, if you can do it better, do it. So I'm here. My main thing is, let's hold the tax rate at an even keel. It's been, you know, it goes up, I mean, you hardly ever hear about taxes going down, but let's at least hold it even. And I think the, the way that the administrations have been going is just going up, and they're wanting to do a bond, and I just say no to the bond, no to higher taxes. So I'm Jude Paredes, and I would request that you vote Jude for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. West.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you to the Greater Beaumont Chamber of Commerce, and Jim, you're doing a marvelous job. And thank you to everybody that's in this room and that's watching online, because we appreciate that you're willing to be engaged and spend the time to learn a little bit more about us. I am Roy West. I was also born in Beaumont and graduated from Lamar University. My wife and I, we have five adult children, all of which are married, three of them live here in Beaumont. So that's a big part of my why. Certainly, we have 10 grandkids, seven of which live here in Beaumont. And Beaumont's been very good to me, still in the mortgage business, although I've been being mayor full-time for the last two years, but still engaged in it, but also own some real estate. So this community is very important to me, and I ran four years ago and two years ago because I want a better Beaumont. That's that simple. It's not because I wanted to be mayor, it was, it was a way to help facilitate that, I felt like. And man, it has been an incredible, incredible privilege. I mean, this morning, I woke up and I was mayor. And it's fun. I've, I've enjoyed it, I've learned a lot, I've gotten to engage with a lot of people across the community, and I continue to show up everywhere across our community because I want people to know. But I've, I made several campaign promises that I feel like every one of them we've executed. And although everybody wants to do the same thing, we've been really effective in the last two years. With the Real-Time Crime Center is up and running, and crime is down. I mean, we're, homicides are down 58%. I know time's ticking away, but we have a vacant building ordinance, we have a no camping ordinance. We've got 60% more ambulances on the road than the day that I was elected. So that's been improved, and I am about out of time, but I appreciate you being here, and hopefully we'll have lots of engaging questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on now to the questions. Again, the candidates will have one minute to respond to the question. Our first question, and we're going to start with Mr. Jones, our first question, in your view, what are the one or two major issues facing the city of Beaumont?
I would say, in my view, especially what's being communicated to, to me as I engage in the community, is lack of revenue. We're not expanding the opportunities that we have to increase revenues in our city. And with that, we lose population, because now we're taxing our population a bit heavier than we was before, because of the decrease in, in numbers of shared tax holders. So our businesses also suffer when we lose these opportunities for growth in our city. I hear many candidates say about what we've accomplished, but we haven't grown in number here in our city. 66,400-plus or minus registered voters is what we currently have, where it is...
Time. Mrs. Muton.
Can you read the question, please?
In your view, what are the major one or two issues, what are the one or two major issues facing the city of Beaumont?
I believe two of the major issues are crime and sewer and water. Crime has been up the past two years, but I'm proud to say that I signed during my mayorship and implemented the funding for the Real-Time Crime Center. That Real-Time Crime Center, as stated, crime is down 58% since the last four months, but with that Real-Time Crime Center, we will see a reduction in crime. Sewer and water, sewer and water is a major issue. During my time as mayor, we approved $32 million through the CARES Act, 29 million of it, which went to water and sewer. So I believe that if we can combat those two issues, we will win Beaumont.
Time. Mr. Paredes, the one or two major issues facing the city of Beaumont?
The major issue to me is the crushing debt. Over $200 million that this city has run up with bonds that we can't pay back, and now the current administration wants to run up another $100 million debt. So yes, then you have to, to pay the bond interest, you have to raise taxes, which goes on to, we're not even going to pay it, all of us. We will never pay off the debt that's already been run up. It's going to be our kids, and this is not really right to put this on to our kids. So we're, at some point, we need to grow up and say, let's stop spending all the money and start paying down the money that we've already spent, the debt. You know, they say, you get what you pay for, then you have to pay for what you got. So we have to take care of our streets, the sewer lines, they're tearing down a bridge, I'm not sure what that's all about, the Maury Myers Bridge. Oh, timeout, but there's others, we'll talk about it. Thank you.
Mr. West, the major one or two issues facing the city of Beaumont?
Well, I think, as mayor, I hadn't been able to just concentrate on two issues, and I don't think any of us will have that flexibility, because if it's raining a lot, we're going to be sure worried about drainage. When you have a medical emergency, you're going to be worried about med units showing up, whether it's crime, whether it's sewer, when it rains too much and you can't flush your toilet, or if you've got brown water. And we've, we've been, put a lot of money into infrastructure, we've continued to do that, and we've made improvements in all our departments and created a lot of efficiencies, all the way down to having a Parks Master Plan that's about to be rolled out. So I think as city officials, we don't get the focus on one or two items, just like in our businesses. If we did that, it'd be silly. We've got, we can handle addressing all of them, we do on an annual basis through our budget. We need to have plans, we need to continue to execute and improve, and make every segment of our city more attractive so that we're...
Time. Mr. Felschall.
Know that since I've been on council since 2019 until now... Our, our fund balance has declined from $52 million high to the last report I got was $39 million, but that will go up a little bit as taxes continue to come in. But regardless, it appears that our fund balance has declined by $10 million. For the last three budgets, we've been in a deficit. Now, that word deficit is in the budget given to the council by the city manager and his staff. This year, we're projecting $3.5 million deficit, not including the firefighter's contract. And so this is a concern that we need to have as citizens. It's a trend. I'm not being an alarmist, I'm telling you that your fund balance is declining, and we seem to have a habit now of balance, or excuse me, budgeting a deficit. The second thing is, we need leadership that has the ability to stand up to and work with our city manager and his staff to make sure we balance our operational expenditures and our operational revenue.
Our next question, and we will start with Mrs. Muton. Our next question is, how do you plan to work with law enforcement and the community to address perceived concerns about crime and public safety? Again, how do you plan to work with law enforcement and the community to address perceived concerns about crime and public safety?
Thank you. That's a great question. I have worked with law enforcement. I had a great relationship with the former chief of police, and I have a relationship with the current sitting chief of police. We, during my administration, approved $1.4 million for park improvements. That master plan park improvement was done during my administration. In addition to that, the Real-Time Crime Center, that Real-Time Crime Center has proven to be a great tool to use for safety. So with all of those elements and using that together, I believe it won't be a problem for me to work with law enforcement, to work with the community, and to work with the tools that we have in place right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paredes.
I think the police are doing a great job, and I will not have a problem working with the new chief. There are a few issues of, there, there was a police officer or a group of police officers injured a man who's sitting in a wheelchair, and that's, look, that's a $5 to $10 million judgment that the city will have to pay. So I would like to see some reforms, a civilian review board, so that we let our officers know and give the police chief an extra tool to remove officers who are not acting according to our standards. So that's the main thing I would like, a new civilian review board. Also, there's a surveillance center, the Real-Time Crime Center, we need some controls on that so that you know when you're being surveilled. Thank you.
Mr. West.
Well, technology is certainly a force multiplier for our police, and we have been working with them in the last year and a half, because the FUSIS system went online in January of '24, and the, our Real-Time Crime Center opened in July, the physical structure. We have over 5,000 integrated and registered cameras now in the city that the police have access to, as well as well over 100 license plate reading cam, cameras that are strategically placed around the city. And this has been a force multiplier, because it allows our police to be at places where they're not, and to be able to see what's happening and before they arrive. So it increases officer safety, and it's already helped solve lots of crime. I think technology from more drones, that currently there are some, but we're looking at being able to bring more online. I think we're going to continue to have force multiplier, and we've got to continue to train and provide our police with the latest in technology.
Time. Mr. Felschall.
I have and will continue to support our first responders through competitive budgeting, salaries, resourcing, training, equipping, in order to be competitive with our neighboring cities that are constantly trying to hire away our men and women. The second thing is, in order to really address crime in Beaumont, we're going to have to face up to a reality. There has to be a partnership between civic business and religious leaders, because the crime that we're facing is a moral issue. You have to understand that you can legislate morality, thou shalt not kill, but you cannot legislate righteousness. That's a condition of the human heart. And so we have to have leadership in our city, civic, business, and religious leaders that will get involved in the next generation and help us to provide them with leadership that has integrity and character and strength, because this is a moral issue. And, and number three, I will be a strong voice at City Hall advocating for our first responders.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
I would like to see strengthening amongst many of those individuals that you, that we've identified actually are criminals, right? One of the things we have to find out is, is the root to the, to the cause. I mean, as, as many said, building legislation on this, that, and the other is, is one thing, but when you have an issue that's plaguing our community, like cost increase and different things like that, as well as loss of insight with our youth, what, what else are we expecting? There's no, no real direction. And as a community-engaged individual, I see it. It's spoken to me, and they would, as well, our youth, as well as our elders, would like to bridge the intergenerational gaps.
Thank you. Our next question, what specific strategies will you use to attract new industries or retain existing employers, given the city's proximity to major industrial zones and ports? Let me repeat that. What specific strategies will you use to attract new industries or retain existing employers, given the city's proximity to major industrial zones and ports? We will start with Mr. Paredes.
Well, hello, the union talked to me, and they said, whenever there's tax abatements given out, that, they say that there's no union rep on the committee that works these tax abatements, so they, I think we should have a union rep on the committees when we're doing tax abatements. And look, this, this city has a tremendous amount of petrochemicals underneath it, and it's been drawn out, and the money goes somewhere, but I would like to see the oil royalties that come to the city should be returned to the citizens as a check, kind of like those stimulus checks, but we'd get it as an oil royalty check. And there is a lot of money. It's hidden, they keep it a secret. So I would like to open it up, and you know, if we let our city prosper, that brings businesses here. So we'll, we'll let the city prosper with low taxes, and we get our own money, and then businesses will be coming here. We don't have to worry about that. Thank you.
Mr. West, do you need the question repeated? It is a lengthy question. Do you want it repeated?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
What specific strategies will you use to attract new industries or retain existing employers, given the city's proximity to major industrial zones and ports?
Well, we are blessed in southeast Texas to have the industry that we do, and I'm excited to say that just, just a year ago, we began an economic development department within the city, and we have an economic development manager for the first time in the history of the city to work along with the Greater Chamber of Commerce here in Beaumont to help recruit and retain businesses here in this area. We have a website dedicated to it. We have a number of economic incentives. We passed Dters for tax increment reinvestment zone. So we've, we've taken a lot of steps to be more attractive, and in that, we have to also be attracting people to our city and making our city attractive and meeting the, all the needs of the people. So when you're looking to bring businesses, you do have to have the economic incentives and the abatements to do that, which we already have, and we have someone working in the city as well as with the Greater Chamber to get businesses more active.
Time. Mr. Felschall, do you want the question repeated?
No, I'm good. As was stated, through our Economic Development Department, we have to promote things like Chapter 380 abatements for small business, Chapter 312 abatements for industrial. But one of the things we have to do is, we have to create a mission mind of, we're here to promote economic development and create a culture at City Hall that is small business friendly. I think some of the things we need to do is to simplify our permitting process and to promote tax abatements for new small business startups. We have to find a way to make it easier for our contractors to get the job done without jeopardizing the safety and the security of our citizens. I hear often from contractors, I don't build in Beaumont anymore because it's too difficult to deal with. We have to simplify the permitting process, create a culture that's small business friendly. The best thing government can do for economic development is to remove the obstacles and get out of the way and let the market run.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
I believe some of the strategies that, that are needed in our city is business diversification. As stated, we are very oil and gas, we, we have that here. Many of the individuals at our university do not go to college for four years for only oil and gas. So those individuals, we're not retaining, as well as some of our high school students, including those that are going to STEM programs. We're not retaining them. So I would like to seek, see ways that we could diversify our, our individual, our city job careers, encouraging many of those youth by offering programs to BISD, like implementing solar maybe, desalinization maybe, recycling, where we're turning trash into bowels field. There's a very large innovative population that we haven't tapped in and they're leaving.
Mrs. Muton, do you want the question repeated, or?
Thank you. I just believe that we have an industry here, we have one of the largest oil and gas industries, and we're going to have to co-op, we're going to have to come together and co-op. Small businesses, we, during my administration, we went through our permitting office to make it more friendly. office to make it more friendly business, because a lot of business people were saying that it was too hard to do business in Beaumont. So we looked at that, and we went in to try to make it much easier. Beaumont had the largest commercial permitting during the time that I was mayor, and so that was a record-breaking year that we put out more commercial permits because we went in and looked at the way that things were done. And so going in and being more friendlier and working and giving abatements to different companies has worked.
Our next question is really a bit of a companion to the previous question. We'll start with Mr. West. What are the innovative ways to attract new businesses and young professionals to Beaumont?
Well, I think it begins with quality of life issues. You certainly want to offer the enhancements, but when people currently have been moving out of the area, we've seen that with our young people, so that's one reason we are working so hard on a downtown revitalization plan, because when you see cities that are similar tires, that have been stagnant for decades or are losing population, the most common strategy used that is successful in bringing back communities is through revitalization of downtown. Downtowns are the heartbeat of the city, and as that comes back, it attracts other businesses, and then the visitors are all of a sudden seeing what a beautiful area we have here. And the area already exists, and it's already beautiful, but we need to remind people and we need to beautify our downtown by bringing more businesses down there.
Mr. Fellshaw.
The council can and should do a lot of things. I wish we could fix everything, but it's a challenge. But we have to start out by making sure we do our job. Infrastructure, public works, economic development, first responders, and again, quality of life, to make sure that we build a community that our younger demographic, our best and our brightest, want to stay here. So we have to address the things that we're all concerned about. We have to address the issue of crime. We have to address the issue of a failing infrastructure. We have to make sure that we build the city that we all are wanting and needing for our children and our children's children. So the council has to do its job, and downtown development, I think, is important. But know this, it has to be sensible. Now, what I mean by that is it has to make sense to you. This ain't San Antonio, and this ain't Austin, and it has to have your support, or I will not get behind it. It has to be driven from the streets of Beaumont and its citizens.
Mr. Jones.
Could you repeat the question, please, sir?
What are the innovative ways to attract new businesses and young professionals to Beaumont?
As I stated just a moment ago, we have to really diversify our workforce and attract that workforce from the city of Beaumont itself. The city of Beaumont has to set the standard in order to attract these spaces. Not only do they have to at least approach these career paths, but they also have to address the infrastructure, and you cannot do that on the backs of taxpayers alone. You have to increase the revenues that are coming into our city. And again, most people who want to invest in our city and employ our young want a body that is able to work, understand, and trainable. Are we currently benefiting our youth by giving them that opportunity and/or those businesses to come to our city?
Mrs. Mouton.
Thank you. I would like to offer incentives for new businesses coming to Beaumont. One thing we will have to do, we will have to work together with BISD. We will have to upgrade our school district. If our school district isn't better and crime isn't better, people are not going to come here. Let's just face the elephant that's in the room. They are not going to come here. Another thing, we have to change the quality of life of Beaumont. We have to get out of the negative statement of Beaumont. Beaumont right now is being recognized as one of the most dangerous cities in the state of Texas. So we have to change that, and together with working with everyone, that has to change. Otherwise, people won't stay. They're going to leave. The other thing I would like to say is that I traveled to Austin, and I testified to bring House Bill 5012, bringing $34 million to revitalize downtown.
Mr. Paredes.
Well, I'm in business, and I can pretty much tell you what a businessman is trying to do is he's trying to do the work and earn enough money to eat, make a little profit. What gets you is when there's a new regulation that wasn't there before, and now all of a sudden, there's a new regulation, or there's a higher tax, or maybe your water bill goes up. So those kind of things kind of really get you when you're in business. So those kind of things is what I would say. Regulations should be reasonable, not some kind of unusual regulation like the TIRS they're talking, the tax incentive relief zone or something. They're like, okay, we're going to tax this guy less and this guy more, and it's like, no, have a uniform tax throughout the city, okay? And if something like downtown, oh, downtown, we've got to rebuild downtown. No, it's like if downtown is going to succeed, then let it succeed, and if it can't succeed, then it's not going to succeed, but keep the tax rate. You also say, well, let's build.
And our next question, and this is a lengthy question, so please, if you need it repeated, feel free to ask, because this question has some length to it. There are widespread concerns that the city is operating under a deficit budget. For those currently in office, why didn't you propose amendments to balance the budget? And for those not currently serving, what changes would you have advocated to produce a more balanced budget and physically responsible budget? Let me repeat that. There are widespread concerns that the city is operating under a deficit budget. For those currently in office, why didn't you propose amendments to balance the budget? And for those not currently serving, what changes would you have advocated to produce a more balanced and physically responsible budget? And we will start with Mr. Fellshaw.
One minute. We have had a deficit budget for the last three budgets, 23, 24, 25. Now, when I say a deficit, I'm saying operational expenditures are exceeding operational revenue. And if you look in the budget, it says on there revenue deficit for this year, 3.5 million. You have to know that in the past, what we would do is we would overestimate our expenditures, underestimate our revenue, so that when you came to the end of the budget cycle, you're able to balance. For example, you may budget for 1,300 employees, but you only hire 1,250, and then you underestimate your revenue, so that when you come to the end, you're there. And that's why, if you'll look at it, we always had a balance, I mean, we had a budget fund balance, strong, and it would close out the same, strong, close out the same. It's because of that. Now, know this, over these last three, I have spoke up. The 23, I raised my hand, it's got a problem. 24, I raised my hand, said I've got a problem. 25, I raised my hand, I said I'll vote no.
Mr. Jones.
One of the things that we should have and could do differently is, like the charter says, not approve expenditures over 20% of your budget. That's the charter. Whether you get it from the general fund or the fund balance, the charter says not to produce or provide a budget more than what you are bringing in. 20% of our revenues. Again, I said earlier today, one of the main ways that we will resolve a lot of these issues is bringing in and attracting revenue into our city. We will be able to at least address our infrastructure problem, and it's not just sewer. We go into restaurants, and we can smell it. We go into our homes, and we can smell it. I mean, it's not just us, right? And you can't attract businesses or keep people in those conditions.
Time. Mrs. Mouton.
Yes. Okay, the city operates from three streams of revenue. The general fund is required by charter to keep a 20% fund balance. Right now, that fund balance has $5 million over what is required. Also, the enterprise revenue fund, both have doubled. In the past year, the deficit was 6.5. It is trending down to 3.5. So to say that it's a deficit, it is a deficit that's trending down. However, both of the fund balances are, the enterprise has doubled, and the general fund balance has a $5 million overage. So I just believe that the way it's being said, it's said one way, but truly, it's not the way it's being said.
Mr. Paredes.
Okay, you hear how the city's in great shape, and we have $20 million, but in reality, the city is over $200 million in debt. And I will prove this, because if the city's in great shape, why didn't my taxes just go up? Your taxes went up, okay? So that tells you, well, they're needing more money for this, for that. Okay, not just taxes, but fees, and I believe the current administration has raised more fees than any other administration in history. I believe something like 200 separate fees were raised during this administration. So once more, I'll get back to what I've, my one note thing is we will not have the $100 million bond issue to build a new City Hall, to build a new riverfront parkway and everything. That will be stopped, and what we'll start to do is begin to pay the debt down, the 200-plus million dollar debt that's draining interest, and our children will be paying for this. We need to think about our kids. Thank you.
Mr. West.
Well, it was presented to council by our Assistant CFO that since 2011, and that's as far back as he went, is every budget since 2011 that's been adopted by our council has been a deficit budget by what has been stated. I'm going to point out that we have reserve funds, and as they've been talked about, and we have different funds for different balances. We've got our water utilities, our solid waste, and our general fund. We're required to have $44 million by charter in reserve for those three accounts. We currently have 66 million. That's $20 million surplus above what is required. When people talk about not wanting to cause concern, I have no problem spending more of that 20 million. You know how many times we got into our reserve with COVID and Harvey? Never. We hadn't gotten into our reserve. So what is the purpose of not spending our 20 million on needs for these residents and our taxpayers?
Our next question is a shorter question. Our next question, how would you prioritize road repairs and infrastructure upgrades without significantly raising taxes? Again, how would you prioritize road repairs and infrastructure upgrades without significantly raising taxes? And we will start with Mr. Jones.
A lot of that, especially when it comes to road repairs, we have to really think about the infrastructure that's underneath it as well. The water line is under there, the sewer line is there, the storm drain is there. So just saying, oh, well, we're going to, you know, patch a hole on this space is, you know, mostly what we're accustomed to here in the city of Beaumont. Without being, there's no way, and anyone up here can tell you that we will be able to fix streets without increasing somewhere. And as stated, there's increases in our water usage rate, there's increases in our trash, and so like, where are those increases? Where are those funds going? And I know that we've replaced or, you know, blacktoped some streets, but again, that infrastructure that's underneath it is still the same.
Mrs. Mouton.
Road repairs and infrastructure, you will have always. Every city deal with it. Everyone deals with infrastructure and road repair. In order to mitigate some of the problems, you're going to spend the money either on overtime, but what I would like to see happen is to subcontract some of that work out, create an emergency team, because there are sometimes, there are situations where infrastructure comes in that you are using your regular day-to-day employees, but then a lot of that work is not even completed in a timely manner. So I believe if we would subcontract some of that work out, in addition to using our day-to-day employees, a lot of this work could be done, it could be done in a timely manner. And then with infrastructure, there are times where there are emergency situations that calls for additional help.
Mr. Paredes.
Okay, I remember the Washington Boulevard project was 10 miles of road, so that was $10 million, a million dollars a mile. And I just wonder if that could have been done more efficiently. For a million dollars a mile of road, I thought, well, is it going to be gold-plated curbs or what? But couldn't it be done more efficiently? We should have a DOGE in the federal government, and I wonder we could look at some of these things that are done here and see if it could be done more efficiently. The other thing is that once more, this city sits on a pool of petrochemicals, and the global oil companies have controlled our city council so that we do not go after all royalties that's supposed to be coming to us. So if we'll go after these royalties, then we will have a fourth source of income for the city. And you think I'm crazy to say this, but look into it. Look into petrochemicals, and you'll see that we're not getting the royalties.
Mr. West.
Well, the best way to do it is to be able to actually measure it, and when you run over a pothole, you think a road's bad, but we have to measure all 760-plus miles of road in our cities in terms of frequency, and we do that, and we actually have it on a website. So much of what is being talked about is already being managed, and it's very public, and where road construction is happening in the city of Beaumont, who the contractor is, that's on there, what's being proposed, when that work's going to be done. So we provide tremendous amount of details about it, but what I find, most people's concerns are when they are having a problem on a specific road. And that is why we do have a road grading system, and we do have to maintain maintenance throughout the year on all our roads. We'll continue to do this, but I actually think we're doing a great job at it, and I'm proud of our city and our staff for the job they're doing.
Mr. Fellshaw.
Don't hold me to this. I'm pretty sure the last time I looked at the budget, we budgeted for this year 24 million for roads, 74 million for water and sewer. So the money is there. One of the things I think we should do is try to identify those pockets in Beaumont where the sewer's backing up every time it rains two inches, and we should target those areas, and let's finally deal with that issue. But that's not easy. I want to acknowledge that. Our staff is working hard, but it's not an easy thing to do. There's over 800 miles of roads, water, and sewer lines. Also know this, that this is one reason why I don't like taking money from the enterprise fund, the fund balance, which is collected from your water bill, and move it over to the general fund to balance our deficit, which is primarily payroll. 78% of our budget is payroll-related. So we're not giving that money back to you. We're giving it to payroll. And know this, your taxes have not gone up. When I first got on council, 71 cents per 100. Today, 65 cents per 100.
Our next question, what position, program, or department would you cut if revenues were less than expenses? Again, what position, program, or department would you cut if revenues were less than expenses? We'll start with Ms. Mouton.
I don't believe we would need to cut any department. I believe if we look at the fat and go through every department, I believe there's always a lot of fat in every department. So go through every department with a fine-tooth comb, see where you could cut rather than eliminating a department. There's a lot of ways. One way would be to cut out some of the overtime with the fire department. At some point, that situation will have to be remedied. Right now, it is 60... Right now, it is sixty percent of the budget across the board. For, for cities, the fire department is only fifty percent of the budget. Right now, we are at sixty percent of the budget. So I believe there's a lot of ways that, that could be fixed and remedied.
Time. Mr. Paredes.
Well, I think everyone in the city, all the city employees, our employees are doing their work fine, working hard. I don't think we would need to cut any jobs. I have an issue though with some of the top administrators are earning over three hundred thousand dollars a year, so I'd like to see that capped. It's not that you can cut it because it's on a contract, but I'd like to see it capped. Our city manager earns almost as much as the Houston city manager, which doesn't, why is a city of a hundred thousand, hundred, hundred twenty thousand paying as much as a city of millions to the city manager? So I would ask that question and we, I'm not saying cut, but let's see maybe some caps for the top administrators. Thank you.
Mr. West.
Yes, sir. We do that now. So every year, for five months, we have a budget process. It'll begin in May and the council is a part of that. And we have every director from every department that appears and presents their budget. And we get to, get as much in the weeds individually as a council person that you want to do. That is, as council, when you have your biggest voice, because we do vote on the budget. So we are able to ask the questions and make sure that there are efficiencies being done. And we're doing that. Just, just this spring, we had John Hopkins University, we'll represent it from there, come to the city of Beaumont through the Bloomberg philanthropies to do an audit of our sewer system at no charge to the city. It's through a program that I've gotten to be a part of and they've worked with our water and sewer department and, and have worked with us to make sure that we are being as efficient as we can. So continuing to review things, using the data and technology to take advantage of what's out.
Mr. Felshaw.
First of all, nobody wants to fire anybody or get rid of any programs, but we have to be fiscal responsible. Seventy-eight percent of our budget is payroll related. If you go back in our budget and you look it up yourself, it's always being said fact-checked to us and you should. Go to the website, Department Finance Budget, look at it. It's my understanding of reading, reading the budget from twenty-three to twenty-five, we added about a hundred people. Now, some of that's part-time, I have to say that, but there was a hundred new people that I see in there that we've got to look at that because that may be where we're averaging four million dollars a year in a deficit because our payroll has ballooned and we have to address that issue. But when you go to cut, you have to look at non-essentials. People have been hammering me over, well, how can you call for a balanced budget, but you still want to give the firefighters and Beaumont PD a raise? Maslow's Law in addressing the basic human needs, one of them is the need for safety and security. If you don't feel safe and secure in Beaumont, you're going to leave. So we have to support our first responders, balance our budget to the best of our ability and deal with the overtime on EMS.
Mr. Jones.
I don't think we should eliminate any, any positions or even programs, to be honest with you. I actually think we should build better programs, refine them. As someone up here stated, you know, cut waste, cut fat, that, that's easy. But we're all in uncertain times at this current, you know, at this current juncture, whether or not we're going to be able to employ others. I, I just don't, I just don't see the reason in, in cutting positions or programs that have been beneficial to not only the city of Beaumont, but the residents as well. Growing our workforce is some programs that we need. So I don't know, I, I just don't see any position that needs to be cut. I do believe that our workforce, our existing workforce is doing great jobs, although we lost over a thousand years.
Our next question, what is your stance on the proposed downtown development project? Do you think it should be taxpayer funded or funded by the private sector? And we will start with Mr. Paredes.
You must know, brother love, that I am opposed to the bond issue. If we had an infinite amount of money, maybe Bill Gates or Elon Musk could give us a hundred million, but we don't, right now, they're wanting to take it off the taxpayers and that's just going to raise the taxes, like not just for us, but for our children. So of course, also, why will we build a new hotel when we've got people that already have hotels here, they're paying an outrageous tax? You know, you go to get a hotel room, I worked at a hotel, go to get a hotel room, you pay seventy dollars, well, twenty of that is tax. So we've already got people paying a huge amount of tax that have hotels and why are we going to make competition at taxpayer expense and then more taxes? And I, I disagree with the bond issue and I disagree with higher taxes. Thank you.
Mr. West.
Well, we're going to be getting our pre-development agreement documents next month, feasibility study, and I'm excited for us to see that because that is something that right now we, we don't have access to. But yes, I'm for the people of Beaumont making that decision. If we want to, if we want to be different, we're going to have to think differently. But if, in terms of public-private partnerships, that is where currently where Civic Center, Convention Center Hotels come from, that's through public-private partnerships. And whether or not it's going to require public funds, the feasibility study will help us with that and if so, how much that would be, and then that would be up for the public to decide. But I do think there are significant incentives that we have worked through that could help fund this and I'm hoping that it, through this public-private partnership, we wouldn't have to increase taxes. But that, we're going to find that out as we get these reports. Thank you.
Mr. Felshaw.
As I mentioned earlier, downtown development for me has to be sensible, makes sense to you and have your support. And I do believe in a phase approach to take the Riverside Park, the Civic Center renovation, Convention Center Hotel and the old AT&T footprint, a green space with amenities, that's a phase. You do this, you prove your success before you go any further. I do believe with the refineries, Lamar University, on all the other things. And remember, the chamber says over the next ten years, fifty billion dollars is coming into this area. Do I believe we can fill up a Convention Center Hotel downtown? I do. You can't build a Westin or a JW Marriott, but we can have a hotel that's reasonable, that can, connected to a convention center, and I think we can support that. But it will require a PP three, private-public partnership. There has to be a partnership between the private and, and the public arena because government doesn't do good whenever she gets into owning things like hotels.
Mr. Jones.
I believe that the downtown development project is good ideas, very great ideas. For future planning, again, as everybody's witness, we have an infrastructure issue. Sewer bubbles on our street, it doesn't have to be a Harvey. We can smell sewage in restaurants. It doesn't have to be raining. Who, and these are some fairly new spaces and homes as well. I think if we take care of our outskirts and then try to rebuild back inner city, that may be attractive to majority people in the community, but as of now, it's not. Because again, we are dealing with the brunt of what the city is expecting or proposing to do. And most of it is increased taxes or increased services or rates to services that are provided.
Mrs. Muton.
Well, I'm proud to say that during my term as mayor, the tours was implemented and that is the tax implemented reinvestment zone. Also, House Bill fifty, which, as I say, I testified, bringing back thirty-four million dollars to reinvest in downtown tourism and hotel and convention. All of those things together with private-public partnership, I believe all of that can happen for downtown Beaumont. But again, I don't think a lot of people are going to be interested in that when they can't flush their toilets. So we have to put things in perspective, handle what needs to be handled, take care of our problems and then start to rebuild and revitalize. It all started with the teardown of the AT&T building. So I believe coupling all of that together, I believe we can get there. Thank you.
And to orient you where we are at, we have two more questions and then we will have our summations from the candidates. Our next question, and this again is a lengthy question, so if anybody wants it repeated, please, please ask. Do you believe Beaumont should reconsider its current form of government where the city manager holds significant authority over day-to-day operations? Would you support moving to a different structure such as a strong mayor system or a hybrid model and why or why not? Again, do you believe Beaumont should reconsider its current form of government where the city manager holds significant authority over day-to-day operations? Would you support moving to a different structure such as a strong mayor system or a hybrid model and why or why not? And we'll start with Mr. West.
Well, thank you for asking that question. And to me, that's just a distraction. I mean, as city governments function across this country, and I've certainly gotten well acquainted with several mayors since I've been mayor and city council, although we have a city manager form of government, we still exercise significant control. I wouldn't want the distraction of trying to restructure our city government at this point. When we're on the precipice of getting so many things accomplished, it would be a big distraction. We can get things done. Our council has the ability to do that and quite honestly, the last two years proved that because we've addressed so many, a multitude of issues from crime to ambulance, sixty percent of ambulance, ambulance coverage, enhanced code enforcement, a vacant building, no camping ordinance downtown to help address homelessness. Those are real issues that we've addressed in less than two years and we're just starting to see the progress.
Time. Mr. Felshaw.
It's true that a strong mayor system is typically like Houston, a strong city manager is typically the city like Beaumont our size. And so I agree, I, to speak to a hybrid model right now is too vague. There's probably ten different models you could follow. But for now, at this time, I, I don't see the need to change our form of government. I do believe that the mayor's office has to have strong leadership, the strength of character to gain respect, to earn trust, to inspire and to lead. I believe it requires leadership, and I'm going to use this word, but just, just bear with me, leadership of righteousness. Now, what I mean by that, and I'm not trying to imply anything of, of the previous twenty mayors, but just, just a mayor and leadership on council that will simply do what's right for all the citizens of Beaumont, not make political promises we can't keep and not cave into political pressure.
Mr. Jones.
I believe that our structure of government currently is, is pretty decent. If anything, I would amend when we go to the polls, it's out of season. I would ask members of council and, and the, the city of Beaumont to, to at least bring our elections into something current, into a playing field that grabs all of our attention, actually. And have our, those candidates rally right alongside any national attention that, that we're getting, right? And so I, I would, I would stick with the form of government that we currently have. We've been doing well so far. I just don't see a reason for, for that even to be a consideration.
Mrs. Muton.
Thank you. I believe the structure of Beaumont government is, is fine. The city manager form of government worked, has worked and it is working. The city manager can only approve fifty thousand dollars on his own. Anything over fifty thousand dollars, he has to go to city council to get approval. So it has worked before, it is working now. I believe it's in a good state. The city manager is, he's governed and policy is given by the city council. So I think it's, I think it's working just fine as stated. A strong mayor, that's for a larger city. I don't see that working at all for Beaumont. Thank you.
Mr. Paredes.
Well, we have been blessed to have very capable city managers and the city manager doesn't run the city, he, he administrates. The city council is, sets the tone and the policy. So I don't think there needs to be any changes, not broken, so I'm not going to fix it, but, but I do think we need to return to having a weekly meeting. For some reason, the city council has been bi-weekly and I, and in a city of over a hundred thousand, I would think you have enough business to have a weekly meeting. I would like to see that. So that would be one of the major changes is just, we're going to have weekly meetings and hear what the people have to say. There was even one mayor that wanted to get rid of public comment that, and I would say no way to that. We're going to listen to what the people on a weekly basis. Thank you.
And our final question before the summations, again, the summations will be two minutes following the candidate's answer to this question. Beaumont has a negative perception among its residents and those from outside the area. What would you do to change the perception of the city of Beaumont? We'll start with Mr. Felshaw.
Through the years, as I've traveled across the state of Texas and I introduce myself, I say, hi, I'm Randy from Beaumont, Texas. And they go, Beaumont, Beaumont. Oh, I know where you're from. And I said, well, what does that mean? And they say, well, number one, your town looks tired, your infrastructure is poor. Number two, your school district is substandard. Number three, your crime rate is higher than the state average. And number four, you're racially divided. And that's what I've heard more than once. And so what can the council do? First of all, we have to be leaders that will address the issues that we can address, whether it's the infrastructure, whether it's public works, whether it's first responders and crime, whether it's the quality of life, economic development. We have to do what we can do, but the government is not the answer to all ills. And there has to be a partnership between civic, business and religious leaders and bring leadership that will do the right thing and bring inspiration and encouragement and positivity to our city.
Mr. Jones.
I think that we must be, we must be the truth that we're trying to perceive, right? Or portray. I know, I know many of our residents and neighbors have great expectations from their elected officials. And one of the things that I do as I engage with our community is, is I put the issue that they have right at their door and I ask them, what is the solution that has been going off in your head about this issue this entire time? Because if I bump my toe over and over, eventually the solution is to slide this over slightly or, or put a nightlight, right? And so the perception that we get is most of our elected don't care and they're going to do what it is that they want to do anyway. But the truth of the matter is, is when we're engaged with those individuals and we build relationship, then we tear those types of perceptions down.
Mrs. Muton.
The first thing we have to do, people that live here in Beaumont, you have to stop with the negative. We speak of our own city in a negative light. Until we stop speaking of it in a negative light, no one else will speak of it in a positive light. In addition to that, we do have to incorporate civic and religious leaders. I think it's going to be a work for everybody here in this city. I love this city. We have so much to offer in this city. We have things that a lot of cities don't have. We have a major university, we have a major port, we have a major refinery, one of the largest refineries in North America. We have wonderful people here. Do we have problems? Absolutely, we have problems. But until we all combat those problems together, they'll never be fixed. Thank you.
Mr. Paredes.
Well, I mean, everybody here loves Beaumont and some people, I guess, talk bad about Beaumont, but I think we could modernize maybe by renaming Jim Bowie Street to David Bowie Street. I've thought about things like that. And we need a stronger partnership between the city and Lamar so that the students can come maybe intern at the city. It wouldn't cost the city that much. And furthermore, never put a microphone in my hand or you'll hear this. She's a whole lot of city, a whole lot of city, she's a whole lot of Beaumont. whole lot of Beaumont, a whole lot of Beaumont. Thank you.
Mr. West.
Well, I'm pretty positive about Beaumont, and I certainly understand that I'm not going to be able to control everybody else's perception of that. But I think it's through progress, and I think it's by getting things done and addressing the challenges that are before you, and I think we're doing a great job of that. And I'm very excited on the direction we're headed. And I realize we live in a time where people tend to like drama and other things, but if you don't pay as much attention to social media, you see a lot less of it. I actually get to see how good Beaumont is most every day. I go across this city, and I've certainly been to many churches with our superintendent, talking about how people can get engaged in their community through the local schools by volunteering. So, there is God showing off all over this community. So, I challenge those that, I know there are negative attitudes, but there are a lot of positive attitudes, and we're making real positive progress right now, and I have great expectations for the future.
We will now go to our summations. Again, two minutes for the summation, starting with Mr. Jones.
I appreciate this evening. Again, I've been asked 10 questions. So, I have a question, or a few for you all. How can we build stronger alignment between the chamber and city hall to recruit new industries? What is the chamber's vision for attracting and retaining your young professionals? How can we co-invest in talent development, innovation zones, and workforce hubs? What role should the chamber play in shaping the future of a more diverse Beaumont, a more diverse Beaumont economy, and one that attracts youth and others, preparing us for global competition? My closing message is, we do not have to imagine a better Beaumont. We can build it. With your partnership, we'll position Beaumont as a boomtown for families, students, workers, and investors. Let's turn the page together. I'm not here to be the loudest. I am here solely to lead with heart, strategy, and service. You can definitely get in touch with me at Chris Oak Jones for mayor. I'm number three on the ballot. And again, thank you all for this time.
Mrs. Mouton.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to say that I believe Beaumont is headed in a positive direction. Beaumont has a new chamber president, a homegrown Beaminer that is happy to be in that position, and I'm excited about where Beaumont is going. I believe Beaumont deserves steady, experienced leadership that listens, unites, and leads with purpose. I am that purpose. I also would like to say that the type of leadership that Beaumont is looking for, I am willing to bring that leadership back to city hall. We have so much to be grateful for here in Beaumont. As I stated, we have one of the largest refineries in North America. We have the number-one military transportation port in the country. We have the fourth-largest port in the whole entire United States. We have a major university with the number-one engineering school. A lot of people don't even know those things, but those are things that are here, right here in Beaumont. And thanks to Jack Brooks fighting for us so many years ago, we have a major interstate running through this city, I-10. So, with all of those things working in our favor, it's no reason why we should not be a prosperous city in the entire state of Texas. I'm proud to say that I was born and raised, and I've lived here all of my life, and I'm excited about the future of Beaumont. Also, I'm excited about the things that I've done with the OCI plant, $34 million for reinvestment for tourism, $26.4 million to the Port of Beaumont, $1.6 million for park improvements. Also, Beaumont has a lot to be proud of. I'm Robin Mouton, number one on the ballot. Thank you.
Mr. Paredes.
I'm Jude, and I'm asking for your vote for Jude. And thank you, thank everyone for coming. Your vote, please, I implore everyone to vote. Your vote is going to be worth 10 votes, because only one out of 10 people will vote. So, everyone go vote, please. I'll run through my bullet points until they cut me off. We will not have a bond issued, and that way, we can keep the taxes the same, maybe lower, but probably just keeping the same, but definitely no increase. The meetings will increase back to once a week, not bi-weekly. We're going to settle the lawsuit. You know, they're just like, there's no lawsuit, there's no $10 million liability, but yes, there is, we need to settle it. Okay, the oil royalties will be returned to the citizens of Beaumont, union representation on the tax abatement committee, start a civilian review board, decriminalize homelessness. You shouldn't be a criminal because you don't have a place to live. We're going to, on a city level, enforce the Civil Rights Act of 1965. President Trump has refused enforcement of this, but we can do it on a city level. You should have access to records of when you are surveilled, the reason for your surveillance, who initiated the surveillance. And if the federal government asks us to do extra duties, then the federal government should come up with some extra funding for that. I'm Jude Paredes, and I would ask you to vote for me, May 3. Thank you.
Mr. West.
Well, it's a privilege that y'all are still here. Thank y'all. I know a few people have left. I hope we have a lot of viewers online, and I thank people for their time. And I thank all the candidates for being up here as well, and certainly the greater chamber. You know, it's a real privilege to get to serve your community in this capacity, and I am grateful for the opportunity. And I'm proud of what we've done in the last two years. And I'm not making any excuses for any of my votes or our fiscal situation. I feel like our fiscal situation is excellent, and I have yet to see anything that points that it doesn't, other than we used to have $30 million in surplus, and now we have 20 million. But if it's surplus, that money is yours to spend. Our crime rate is lower than it was two years ago. We do have 60% more ambulances, med units on the road now. We have continued to spend significant tens of millions of dollars on our water and sewer infrastructure. We have enhanced code enforcement. We had 27 buildings in downtown red-tagged last April in our last report, or 14 of them are near compliance or in compliance. So, we're making progress. We're looking at this downtown development project. It is a community effort. It has been, it will continue to be. We want to know what people want to do, and we want you to show up and vote. We want you to be engaged in the process. About 20% of the registered voters in Beaumont, if it's a good turnout, will show up. So, that means 1 in 5 will vote. So, your vote is important. And I tell you that I think our council is working hard. I think our city administration is working hard. There are challenges before us, but there's always going to be. And those challenges are what get us up every day to address and make things better. I believe we are making things better. Vote RoyWest.com is my website. Be sure to check that out, and I do ask for your vote in the upcoming mayorial race. Thank you.
Mr. Fellshaw.
First of all, thank you, chamber, for this opportunity, and I do commend everyone that's in this race. It takes a lot to step up and to be a public servant. Please know this, that born in Beaumont, raised in this area, been in and out because of my vocation, the ministry, came back 19 years ago to take what was then Cathedral and the Pines Church, now One City Church. For 19 years, I've been working in this community. And I say that because I want you to understand that what I do now on city council, and that I have been doing for the last six years, I was doing for years before I ever knew I would be on city council. And I will be doing this after I get off of city council, because this isn't just a political thing for me. This is who I am, this is what I do. I personally believe, as citizens, you should identify people in your community that are already doing the work of a civic leader or leader in our community, and then give them the title of a community leader. The man makes the title. The title does not make the man. So, you need to ask the question, what have my leaders been doing before and after they've been on council? Where have they been? What have they been doing? And I've been doing this for years, and I'll keep doing it for years. In my first term as mayor, there are five things that I will focus on. Fiscal responsibility, a sensible approach to downtown development, looking at the sewer lines that keep backing up, and God help us with the train horns that are blowing and try to help those poor people. We need to address the crime situation with a partnership between civic, business, and religious leaders, because it is a moral issue. And then, we need to restore strong leadership to the mayor's office that can stand up to and work with city hall to address some of these issues that are not only convoluted but complicated. It takes strong leadership. Randy Fellshaw, running for mayor, I would greatly be honored if you would consider me to be the next mayor of Beaumont.
Thank you to all the candidates. A round of applause for the candidates.
Thank you, candidates. We appreciate your time and for you to be here, and thank you for our audience here and at home. This is our final forum. And so, with that, I say, good night. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Crime Stoppers. Thank you, Channel 12. Have a good night.